I'd like to call this meeting to order. This meeting of the Auburn, Town of Auburn School Committee is being conducted in person and is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. All are welcome to join us in person at 5 West Street. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on Auburn Public School website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Thank you. Like to stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. Our commitment, we will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools, respecting race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability. Alright, citizens comments. Per school committee policy, speakers are allowed to speak up to three minutes to present their material and must begin their comments by stating their names and town precinct. Do we have any citizens comments? Hello, Mrs. DeLuca.
My name is Allison DeLuca. I'm speaking as a resident of the Town of Auburn. My address?
No, that's mine.
Okay. I am just here solely as a resident and I would like to share some information with you that I have done research on and hopes to be a part of a solution moving forward with something that I have found has created, again, I'm speaking as, I'm here solely as a resident of the town, seeing how I can maybe share some research that I did and hope that we can come to some resolution to restore some trust that I feel like has, or a lack of trust that has developed in our community and I want to help establish, fix it in a way, and that's why I'm here. And I'm going to share with you a letter and I just really want to make sure that it's clear that I'm just hoping to be part of a solution to something that I have witnessed and want to share and hopefully that we can come together and have a conversation about it or after you look at this. That make sense? Do you have questions for me?
Yeah.
I know you have no given. Here you go. I just, this is, I always, it took me a lot of thought and effort to try and gather myself to do this today. Like I said, this is my letter and this is some of the research. Doing great. And then I, like, request information is not, it is solely to move forward and just, yeah, we can make some leaking policy or evaluate what we do and how we can make it better.
Thank you.
And then whilst taking photos, take it out and then I get, I'm gonna bring it back in.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry?
Any questions? They're reminded to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens comments? Alright, do we have any special recognitions?
Not this evening.
Great. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from November 5th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from November 5th, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Uh, student, no student reps tonight? Okay. Superintendent report.
Uh, so first I want to welcome Piper this evening. We did welcome you last, at the last meeting. Piper's going to serve as our sitting member, our student member of the committee moving forward, so we're excited to have her tonight, so welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, so we'll move on now to our student spotlight. We have Mrs. Fontaine here with several of her students, so I'll let them introduce themselves if you'd like to come on up and talk about your spotlight project with Dr. Lopez.
I know you already know many of our kids, but I'm very excited to present three great students and a wonderful teacher, Mrs. Fontaine. I have Bentley, Izzy, and Cecilia, and I'll let Mrs. Fontaine explain a great combined lesson that really brought to life a lot of great learning for these students, and I'll let them explain all of that. So I'll leave it over to Mrs. Fontaine.
Thank you. So in fifth grade, we have been learning about volume in our newly adopted iReady math program in addition to physical science. So the timing of the construction here was actually really great in that it allowed for us to look at a very real-world, meaningful experience where they could see that their math skills, their science skills, and also their empowering writing skills were applicable here. So behind me, I have three of my math students. I have Bentley, Izzy, and Cecilia who would like to share a little bit about their experience and what they've learned. First up, we have Bentley.
Hello, everyone. My name is Bentley and I'm here with Izzy and Cecilia. We are here today to share a hands-on project that connected our iReady math lessons and science lessons to a real-world problem happening right here at Swanson. A few weeks ago in math class, we were learning about how to calculate volume. We knew that volume is found by multiplying a length times width times height of a 3D object. Our teachers had the excellent idea of finding a real-life problem to make our learning more fun and relevant. It just so happened that there was a big hole in a lot of trucks doing construction at Swiss. This led to our first field trip outside. We went out with our field notebooks. This notebook is where we took notes. We had prepared it carefully prior to going outside. Each entry had to include the date, the time, location, and weather. We then wrote notes about things we observed and began to write questions. I'll now share my first field notebook entry. October 1st, 2025, front of Swiss parking lot. It has a very deep ditch, plenty of dirt, construction trucks, mounds of dirt everywhere, and pavement remains. I had no questions at that time. And this is, and this is my field book.
Cool. Great.
Nice.
Alright, next up, we have Izzy.
Hello, my name is Izzy. After our first visit, we followed up with more observations as the project continued. Our next observation was about a week later, where we had followed the same format with notes and observations. We even had pictures to reference for each entry. Then, about 20 days from the start of the parking lot project, we went out once again. There had been a delay in the work because they were trying to decide whether to do a bigger project or a smaller project and then continue with it a few years later. What they didn't realize was that the problem was much bigger than they had thought. They had to reassess the functioning of the existing yellow tubes and their, in their ability to drain water the way it needed to be. I'll now share my second and third field notebook entry. October 6th, 2025, 6:09 a.m., we were at the Swiss front parking lot. The hole had looked deeper and it looked about 15 to 20 feet. There are no more, there are no more of the broken yellow tubes all around the site. There are black tarps mixing to the, mixing with the dirt and the hills of the dirt got bigger. The hole looks bigger, looked bigger on one side than the other, and there are big chunks of pavement on the side of the hole. Looks. The hole was smaller because it got filled in more. There were new yellow tubes and there are still black tarps on the side. The hole looks wider and it smelled like dirt and steel. This is my notebook. As part of our learning, we are able to look at the draft plans that were being used during this constructive project. This helped us visualize the scale of the work. This is the front of the plans. And on here, the black lines represent at the start how big the hole was supposed to be as they dug, and the blue lines represent after there was even a bigger problem, how big they eventually dug it, dug it.
I needed you to come to my presentations to the school.
Never heard it talked in such a positive light.
He's such a great gem.
Hello, my name is Cecilia. To get a better understanding of the project, we invited Mr. G to come to our classes and explain what was happening in the Swanson parking lot and what he needed to fix the leaking. More importantly, how to complete the project before winter. Our volume estimates versus reality. While he was in class, we shared our estimates of the volume of the project based on our observations and what we thought the dimensions were. We were so wrong. Our estimates were very small, ranging between 648 cubic feet and 3,000 cubic feet. The actual measurements were 52,500 cubic feet. Sadly, we had hoped throughout this project that it would end up being a pool with an awesome diving board. That didn't happen. Instead, Mr. G explained how everything works and how the problem originally started with water drainage. He also explained the purpose of different equipment. The biggest and more, most important thing that we learned throughout their, these lessons is that it's crucial to take your time with whatever work you're doing and not to be careless because careless errors can eventually cause bigger problems down the line. This is, this was part of what we saw with the drainage issue at Swiss. At this time, we can take any questions, ask Ms. Fontaine.
Very good. You should have brought them.
The numbers and everything.
Excellent. Excellent.
Are you great? Great. You kids feel like you have a better grasp of volume?
Yeah.
After this project?
Yep. Through the chair, I wanted it to be a pool too, just saying.
I know.
I'm with you on that. I wanted it to be a pool too.
They paved it today. So no more chance of a pool. No more pool. That's the cover.
That was going to be my big news for today, that it was finally paved today. No. So how did it feel to be able to see like a real project like that? And what did you think about having Mr. G come to your classrooms?
I think it was like really cool for Mr. G to come and the, and I've found it like easier to like understand volume because we had something that was actually happening.
Excellent. Good observation, Bentley.
I think it was also cool because like it helped me understand like what real-life problems would be like, and it also was like very like fun to like take a break and go outside and then like see a hole right there in the middle and just like take observations. And when like Mr. G came, um, that was fun, so like he told us a lot and maybe that could be like our future job or something that we could be able to do.
I thought it was, I thought it was also very nice because before he came in, we didn't really know what was happening and we didn't understand anything. And he taught us like what was going on and like how they were going to solve it. And it's also, like, a lot of times students in our class ask, when are we going to use this in their real life? And that gave us a really good example of it.
That's true.
And did it inspire any of you to be interested in that, like, engineering work or construction work or, or was anyone in your class maybe talking about that?
I think we actually have a few engineers here. The questions that they were asking Mr. G were incredible questions, things that I might not have thought of myself, so I think we definitely have some future engineers here.
That's excellent. Well, I'm glad to hear that a project that gave me a lot of worry gave you all so much joy and learning. But thank you, that was fantastic. And I, we're going to share your nice thoughts about Mr. G too. He's not necessarily always a teacher, maybe he said that, right? But he liked being in that capacity an awful lot and loved working with you kids, so.
I share an office with Mr. G and he continues to talk about how much he enjoyed that experience.
Yeah, it was great. It was great. So if you'd come up and maybe shake our hands and then we'll let you go for the evening, would that be okay? Thank you very much. Nicely done.
Not scary, we're honest. I mean.
Great job. Great job.
Nicely done. Thank you so much.
Great job. Awesome. Yeah. Nicely done. Great job. Great job. Good job. See you.
Nicely done. Awesome job. Thank you, Dr. Lopez. Everywhere, I love it. Thank you so much.
Do you want to take a, would you like to take a picture?
Why don't we just scooch this right, have them stand there? Maybe that'll work.
Want to come up front?
Stand right in here. Each of us.
Do you want to be in it? No, I don't want to be in it. What? I just want to take a picture. Dr. Lopez, do you want to be in it? Yes, I can. Do you want to take it?
I can do it. I, I'll do it. And so you can take your aspect.
Okay. Although we can't. I know.
Awesome.
Thank you, you guys are all free to go.
Unless they want to stay.
Yep, yep. So we're gonna.
Everyone, thanks for coming.
Have a good night. We're gonna go a little.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Bye. Have a good night.
Thank you.
We're just going to move down to new business. We have Ms. Cox here.
Yes, thank you. So this evening, we have Kerry Fox, a new director of pupil services, not really that new anymore, right? Because we're into the school year, but thought it was a good time for her to come and say hello, introduce herself a little bit, and talk about her time here in Auburn.
Yeah, it's, I mean, that's hard to follow, so. I'm Kerry Cox. Nice to meet everyone. Before I came here, I was in Westfield. For the five years before I was here, I was a special education supervisor. I oversaw grades five through eight for three years, so I went back and forth to each school and then grades pre-K, uh, pre-K to four. So, in the district, in, in Westfield, I wrote protocols for entry and exit criteria across multiple programs to ensure consistency and clarity in student placement. I bring, well, I already told you that, so. Throughout this time, I collaborated closely with principals, parents, teachers, and advocates to support students and maintain strong communication across all stakeholders. I also facilitate PLCs and professional development for the special education teachers. So as, since I started here, I am still learning the culture of Auburn, and during this time, I have worked to build strong relationships and understand the district systems. I collaborated with principals on a regular basis and I have attended multiple AP meetings. I meet with the team chairs bi-weekly and I have also met with the nurses and the school psychologists. I have supported both, well, I have supported Rise and Evolve program when they were short-staffed, so I went in there and I was working with a student doing discreet trials. I meet weekly with the social-emotional learning team at PACC. I have visited all the programs and connected with each of them. Moving forward, I plan to spend time in inclusion and co-taught classrooms to observe and circular practices and deepen my understanding of how these models operate in Auburn. So, you have any questions? I know that was short, but.
That was great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Lucky to have you.
Oh, thank you.
Welcome.
Any questions? Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
You're more than welcome to stay or go.
Yes, you are free to go.
My mom's at home with my kids, so.
So you will go.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
So we're going to move back up to unfinished business.
Thank you. So at one of our last meetings, I did talk to you about the earmark funding that we seemingly had been awarded through Senator Moore's office. I did finally, I had to go through the application process through GEMS, which is their grant management system, and we have been awarded the $75,000 toward the purchase of a vehicle. So I'll be working with Mrs. Stanek and Mr. Gregoire for the purchase of a 12-passenger van that can be used by Encore as well as Rise and Evolve, and in some cases, some of our clubs. There are some times that we have, you know, a small group of students that might go to the State House, and it's always tricky with transportation because they can't take them in their own vehicle, they can't park, they have the parking garage, all those issues. It's going to give us a lot of flexibility versus having another bus, like we, the small buses. So it's going to be much smaller, a little bit easier to navigate for folks, so we're excited about that. So once we get it, we'll let you know. We'll have the Auburn logo on it and all of that.
Do you have to have a special license to drive? Or do you have like a regular van?
You do not.
Awesome.
Yeah.
That's great.
Alright, the next item is just an update on SNAP and really it should say Auburn Youth and Family Services. As you know, we facilitated a pretty large food drive due to the cut of SNAP benefits across the country. And I just wanted to share some good news. So if you look at the photograph, that's one shot of Auburn Youth and Family Services with some of the donations that they received. There's another one, if you know, the big room where they keep all of the open room. So that's, yeah. In addition to that, they've received over $10,000 in financial donations. Sally Darkangelo is nothing but overwhelmed, and I also know that this picture was taken before there were over 300 items donated from Auburn High School just yesterday. So really, a tremendous outpouring from the community and we're thankful to them for all of that. And Sally and her team are working furiously to get this, these items disseminated to families. So just really a tremendous, tremendous amount of support. So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone. Seemingly, for the most part, SNAP benefits have been now given out to families and hopefully that will last and there won't be any changes to that. It's hard to keep track of where some of those federal initiatives stand, but at this time, we're in, seemingly our families are in better shape than they were at one point. So we're happy to hear that and happy, again, for the outpouring of support from the community. The next item we return to is the FY '27 school year calendar. We spoke about this at the last meeting. I, there was an error in, in what I had had that moved us to the last day at June 21st, and there was a lot of discussion by the committee to see if there were some other options. At this point, some have been explored. Seemingly, it's still going to be a later end to that FY '27 school year, but with the correction that I made, it brings the last day of school to June 18th. With the only really remaining option to make a day is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, which last year and this year are slated to be a full day off from school. Prior to that, we had had half-days on that day. And when we made that switch, I did survey families and staff, and there was an average of about 53% that wanted that to be a full day versus the 47% that said it could be a half-day. So I don't know if it's the will of the committee that I do a more current survey about this to see what the, what the feeling is among families and staff, or if the committee has a feeling one way or the other regarding that Wednesday before Thanksgiving. But that really is the, the one thing left that we could change that would then move the last day of school to June 18th, 17th versus the 18th. And June 18th, isn't Juneteenth observed? It is not. So when Juneteenth falls on a Saturday, it's observed on a Saturday. Okay, I just want to. Yes.
Through the chair, can I ask a quick question? Someone had brought this up to me and I figured I'd throw it out there. I'm not sure if it's possibly done because I know the contract dates and things like that, but is it possible to do full days of professional development, sorry, on August 27th, the 28th, 31st, and the 1st, just to get them out at the beginning of the year and relieving the two, the day in October and the day in March?
So in the teacher's contract, it does state that school will not start earlier than the week before Labor Day. I did do some informal research related to that, and it does not seem that that's something that would be entertained.
Okay.
To start prior to that.
Through the chair, I think if, when did you say was the half-day? Like the last survey you did on the half-day? Two years ago?
It was two years ago. Because this is our second year, so it probably would have been that previous fall.
Through the chair, I think I prefer that we survey and just see, I mean, I know I have a half-day, so to me, I don't care if my kids have a half-day, but some people might travel, and so I think we should ask. And, you know, I mean, that was still close, but there was still more percentage towards like wanting the full day off. So I think we need to ask the community, for sure.
The only thing that was brought up to me through the chair was the amount of half-days and not like having after-school care, having, being a working professional, if you are a school teacher, works great, but if you work in a hospital, you know, you have one, two, three, four half-days where you have to find another way to have childcare, especially if they're smaller. You know, we don't really worry about the high schoolers, but anyone under the age of 12 in the state of Massachusetts is, you have to find something.
Piper, what are your thoughts?
Um, I mean, from, from a high school standpoint, because when it comes to academics from like a high school standpoint, um, this week we have finals on Friday and the next week on Monday. And then Tuesday, as you may know, we have kind of like a half-day schedule, then we have our Thanksgiving assembly. And I think that some kids might appreciate if we just have Wednesday completely off because since we're done with all of our classes and stuff, just being in school for like another full day, like having nothing to do with any of our classes and like, just like, maybe like sitting, like watching movies or whatever for like six hours a day would be considered boring and some kids may think that they have better things to do. Um, but I think like from an academic standpoint, that's what I have to say.
Okay.
For me personally, if I'm being honest, I don't really care.
You're going to be a senior year next year, right? You don't have to make up snow days. Um, I think a survey is probably a good idea. Just get some more data and then we can go from there.
Through the chair, what is the, I can't figure out what the green is around the seven.
That's the half-day for kindergarten? It's not a half, no. I mean, it's a no-school for kindergarten on that day for screening. Just for kindergarten, current kindergarten students.
I was just confused. I was like, I didn't see, okay, got it. Thank you.
Great.
So more to come.
More to come. Alright, so the new superintendent search is off and running. We had 20, I almost said 25, 21 candidates that came forward by our due date. We have got it down to a, less than 10 that we're looking at, that we, we looked at everybody as a committee. I cannot say enough about our search committee. They come from all different areas and know a lot more than me about this, so that's great. Alan, Mandy, Jen are probably going to be sick of me by the end of all of this, but that's okay. So we're hoping to start our interviews, the first, well, we are doing interviews the first week of December, hoping to do tours the following week. And I'm not going to say it's going to be buttoned up by the new year, but that's my goal, but no promises. But it's all going well. We've got some really good candidates. Yeah. Unless you don't want to retire.
That's still on the table. That is still on the table, Dr. Tymon.
We will honor a one-year contract.
Okay.
Alright, now to the fun stuff. So as you know, we have been knee-deep in the, already looking at the FY '27 budget. So tonight, I'm just going to give you kind of an update as where we stand right now. Obviously, some time ago, I asked for your priorities, those being maintaining our class size, anti-bullying initiatives, social-emotional needs, and school safety. So keep going down, Alan. So just some of the items and things, and we will have at our next meeting, will be a big budget kickoff, but at this time, the FY '27 budget stands at $34,084,765, which would be a 4.28% increase over the FY '26 approved budget. Obviously, it meets our contractual obligations. Unknown for this budget, we will negotiate this year with secretaries, custodians, and instructional assistants. So we have been in touch with them and we'll be setting up time to do our ground rules and begin that process. This budget reflects the anticipated 7% increase in the cost of transportation, again, the AA transportation contract that was negotiated last year by Mrs. Stanek. You know, student enrollment has basically been steady. There is some, we're going to see some graphs on that in a minute, but we still have Topograph, Perry Place, and other initiatives.
Yeah, unless you don't want to retire.
That ship is sailed.
That is still on the table.
We will honor a one-year contract.
Okay.
All right, now to the fun stuff. So as you know, we have been knee-deep in the, already looking at the FY27 budget. So tonight, I'm just going to give you kind of an update as where we stand right now. Obviously, some time ago, I asked for your priorities, those being maintaining our class size, anti-bullying initiatives, social-emotional needs, and school safety. So keep going down, Alan. So just some of the items and things, and we will have at our next meeting, will be a big budget kickoff, but at this time, the FY27 budget stands at $34,084,765, which would be a 4.28% increase over the FY26-approved budget. Obviously, it meets our contractual obligations. Unknown for this budget, we will negotiate this year with secretaries, custodians, and instructional assistants, so we have been in touch with them, and we'll be setting up time to do our ground rules and begin that process. This budget reflects the anticipated 7% increase in the cost of transportation, again, the AA transportation contract that was negotiated last year by Mrs. Stanek. You know, student enrollment has basically been steady. There is some, we're going to see some graphs on that in a minute, but we still have Topograph, Perry Place, and other initiatives in the town that are kind of in process that could influence our enrollment. As we do each year, we watch our kindergarten enrollment. We're never quite sure where we're going to land for that, so to make sure that we're not either overstaffed or understaffed related to that. Special education, and again, you'll see in a minute in the graphs, is a big, plays a big influence on our work. So, as you know, we currently have two residentially-placed students. We have 13 students in day placements. Two of those, and actually, it should probably say three, were very late arrivals, so they came in this summer. We are looking for, we're awaiting an LEA placement, which means that you apply to DESI because we're not sure the student is our responsibility or that of another town based on some demographic information related to the family. It's a complicated thing, so if it turns out that this LEA placement is decided for the other town, then they would be financially responsible. We just don't know that yet, so we're waiting on that, and we may be back to you this school year, I would say, most possibly early next year, looking for approval to go to special education stabilization accounts again for these arrivals, but we're trying to let the LEAs play out before we do that, to see what exactly we're responsible for.
Would we get back paid on that?
We would.
Okay.
We would, yes. We continue to see our revolving accounts diminish a bit that we rely on for offsets. You know, we have families more so qualifying for the sliding fee scale at the preschool, and many more certified through the state, through the direct certification process through the state, and so then they don't pay, for instance, busing fees. You know, as we all well know, there are many families financially struggling right now. State aid and grant funding is still unknown. There is great concern for the title grants, along with IDEA funding for FY27. If there were something to happen with that, we would not be in a boat alone. We would be in a boat with every district across the state trying to, and across the country, trying to figure that out, so there is still uncertainty about that. And we are still in the process of making sure that our offsets are accurate and sustainable, so we're working on that. As far as new positions, oh, it won't let you scroll?
No, I did.
Oh.
I'm there.
Oh, there we go. Sorry. We're not requesting any new positions for FY27. What are the implications for current staffing in the budget as it stands? We have a foreign language teacher retirement at the high school. That position will not be refilled. We have a foreign language retirement at AMS that will not be filled. We're potentially considering a transfer of a teacher from the middle school to Swiss, which would eliminate one position. Swanson Road has two teacher retirements. One will not be filled, and we're trying to figure out enrollment-wise if the other one will be or won't be. We still need a little time on that, and looking to replace the preschool LPN and the Point Four-Point Four-Float RN with a 1.0. So those are some of the direct staffing impacts of this budget, and so the next steps will be that at our next meeting, we'll have budget presentations with the leadership team. December 19th, we'll give the committee time for additional recommendations and discussion to happen, once you've had a chance to review things again, and then by January 7th, we have to have a vote for the draft budget to go to the town. And just additionally, you know, you have a graph in here related to our enrollment. You know, the high of our enrollment was in 2018, and we've been hovering around 2,500 since then, down to 2,444. If you go down to our special education population, you'll see that just from last year to this year, there's been an over 9% increase, which we now have a number of 400 special education students across the district, which is a tremendous increase if you look over the last four or five years. And what we're also finding is, in large part, these are not students with moderate disabilities, but our students with significant disabilities have increased tremendously in the level of need, and so therefore, that's where you run into the need for staffing and support services and all of that. And this is just some historical budget data, so, you know, last year, we asked for a 3.81 increase. The year prior was 4.5, year before that, 4%, 3.52, and so moving forward, looking at 4.28. As we know from our experience last year with all the uncertainty around state aid and all of that, I suspect that that's not where we'll land. I would imagine that we'll be back looking at a different amount come maybe February, but that's where we stand right now. We've been collaborating with the town and meeting with them, and hope to do so again in the coming weeks to look at where they're at. They start their whole kickoff later than we do, because, yes, we are indeed the much largest department out of the town, and we have a lot more moving parts, so we start earlier, so there'll be more to come with all of this, but just wanted to kind of give you an outline of where we stand right now. And so what does this budget at this point do for the students and staff? It keeps our class size, maintains programming to provide training and support to eliminate bullying, and those, all those social-emotional things, and the safety of our kids, but it does level fund all supplies, materials, and resources, and we do show a decrease in our professional development funding for that year. And I will tell you, just to be clear, that when we level fund our supplies, it basically is a cut because prices are going up, right? So we know that. So how do we decrease the draft budget amount, right? Decrease staff or resources, or generate revenue? And the only way we can generate revenue is increase, increasing tuition or fees, or increasing the number of school choice seats, which is an option too. So I think those are going to have to be things that the committee considers as we move forward. I know we had gone through some options for increasing some fees, and I also know that there's a reluctance to do so, because as we say, on one hand, our families are struggling, right? So it really is walking a tightrope when we try to bring forward a budget that's responsible to all the, all the different parties that are involved. So there's much more to come, but I welcome any questions you have at this point, and again, we will have the, a full draft for you at the next meeting.
One question. I know it says that it's maintaining class sizes, so even with the drops at the high school and the middle school, those core classes aren't going to have higher numbers of students in them?
That is correct. And even the ones at Swanson Road, we have a very, at this time, as of today, we have a very small second-grade class going up to third grade, like, almost 35 students less than the other grades at Swanson, so that, that's, that's how that balances, so.
Wonderful.
You know, we see those, right? We have a year where one's particular grade is much bigger or much smaller than others.
Great. Any other questions?
Are we, are we seeing, through the chair, are we seeing a lot of retirements coming up, or?
We are. We have a, I'm not going to have a solid number, maybe five this year, including myself, and I suspect that there'll be additional ones next year.
Anything else?
Now that that sucked all the off.
There goes that gloom and doom. Bring the kids back.
Well, through the chair, the MAS C, they, that also kind of, with the funding and stuff, that was kind of foreseen, so.
All right, we're moving on to new business. No Director of Pupil Services, so Robert Goddard.
Yes, so as you may or may not know, next March, there's going to be the Robert Goddard Centennial Celebration here in town, slated to be a weekend of events, March 14th and the 16th. We'll have school-based events that whole week prior. We have received a request from the Centennial Committee. The initial request was to not have school on March 16th, which is a Monday. In looking at our calendar, we also have that week, a half-day on Thursday, and a full, which is a professional development day, and a full day on Friday. And so, seemingly, I think the idea being is that if the kids didn't have school, then they would all go, they're going to do a rocket launch up at Packer Chaw Golf Course at the, about the exact time that Robert Goddard did that. But seemingly, in thinking about this and looking at our calendar, and knowing that it's a really big deal for families to change things mid-year, the idea being, or the potential that I'm putting toward, forward to you this evening, is to move the half-day from Thursday to that Monday, March 16th. So it would just be a shift in that time. We can't change the full day on Friday because we already have a speaker coming in that we've paid for and committed to having on Friday as part of the full day. The event at the golf course, they believe will happen around 2:30, which hopefully, by then, buses would be, you know, usually our last bus on a half-day. Everybody's off and home by 1 o'clock. So we might be able to scooch 10 minutes earlier, the whole runs and everything that day, to get everybody home. They're anticipating huge numbers of people in town, and so I did speak with the police department about making sure that we could get help with getting buses through to certain places that day, if, if indeed it pans out that we have 30,000 people at Packer Chaw Golf Course that day. I, I don't know, because there are competing events happening in Worcester as well, because he was part of Clark University, so there's a lot of unknowns related to it, but this is one thing that they would like us to try and do, to not only open up time for families who might want to go, so that they're not missing school, but also to have us tucked away and off the roads once the event really begins at 2:30 that afternoon. And if you have any better ideas, I would take those too, but I feel like, being part of the community, I want to respect that there's a very committed group of people putting this event together, and we want to do our part to support things and make sure it's a success. So, I don't know if you have any questions or thoughts.
Through the chair, do we need to run this by the AEA, or it doesn't matter?
We're not changing any, we're not changing their contractual days, it's just moving the day of the...
Because they're in a full-time PD day anyway.
Yeah, they're, they're working all day that day anyway, whether it's Monday or it's Thursday.
Through the chair, I don't have, I don't have an issue moving from Thursday to Monday. I think that it's a good solution, and I, like you said, most kids, I think, are home by, like, 1 o'clock, so get the kids off the road and the buses out of the way.
I can entertain a motion to move the half-day from that Thursday to that Monday in commemoration of Robert Goddard.
I'll make a motion to move the half-day from that Thursday to that Monday in celebration of Dr. Goddard.
I'll second.
It's March 12th to the 16th.
Do we have any discussion?
No, not March 12th. It's the Thursday after. The current, the current half-day is the...
So moving the 19th?
The 19th to the 16th.
19th to the 16th.
Correct. Yep.
Any discussion?
And Dr. Jimmerlin, you'll just send out, like, a...
Ad nauseum. I will send out notices.
This will happen.
Yes, as will the building principals to make sure families are aware.
Through the chair, we're not missing anything. We're not rushing on this, right? Like, I don't want to just, like, do it and then everyone be very upset about it.
So my only concern with waiting is childcare for kids, and if we think we're going to do this, and it sounds like the town really thinks we should, I want to give families enough time to figure out childcare, because I remember how hard that was.
Oh, great. I agree. I remember that. I just...
There are still lots of questions about the event in the chance that we have, you know, two feet of snow on the ground.
Yeah.
But again, as we know, you can't predict the weather, right? And so I kind of thought of it as that either way, we're having a half-day that week.
Yeah.
And so however that event plays out, we're, it's, we're just making a shift by a few days, and we are giving families ample notice, I think, to make any kind of changes that they might need to do.
And do we know if our after-school programs were doing after-school care on that Thursday, could they do that on Monday instead?
I will make sure we can, if that was the case.
Okay. All right, I'll take it up to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, it is a vote.
Thank you.
Piper, I expect to see you.
Don't worry, I'll be there.
All right, Superintendent Goals?
This is just an update on my goals for this school year. The first goal being related to a formalized data review process at the middle school and high school. That has happened at the middle school. They've resulted in the change of the study skills block that they had there, to make sure that certainly our students with special needs are getting additional assistance in meeting their goals, and Mr. Keller's been working at the high school around the development of Common Assessments. I've been meeting with Mr. DeLongchamp related to looking at some of the data at the high school, and so I believe that that's in process at this point. The next goal is around developing a culture which staff members are reflective about their practice using data, so this is, takes place during principal meetings and making sure we're also being reflective practitioners. We've gone through MCAS accountability. We've reviewed what it means for us with the Mahmood and Taylor, which is the parent option to opt out of some topics in schools. We've done some reflection on what, what our schools and how we respond to that. Each school has now completed a family survey and has distributed that to their families. Some are still being collected. I think the elementaries just went out on the 14th. Middle school and high school had already done that, and then we also had a conversation about data-driven dialogue and how to have those conversations with teachers about data in their classrooms, so we're making some good progress there also. The next goal is a repeat of my previous ones, devoting some of our meeting time to talking about bias, racial identity, and things that happen in our schools. So this is examples of some of our meeting topics. There was, as you are aware, earlier in the year, we had a political issue at Auburn High School. We've kind of debriefed that and talked that through with how we could have done better. Again, Mahmood and Taylor. There have been a number of building-based issues that principals have brought forward as problems of practice, and also there's been professional development brought in on addressing complex students with students, complex topics with students and staff. And finally, it was, my goal is around observations of teachers, but through the avenue of working with administrators, and so early in the year, we reviewed the teacher evaluation process, which is clearly spelled out in the AEA contract, to make sure that we were all meeting the deadlines and the expectations for that, and I've since been monitoring through Teach Point, which is the tool that we use, how many walkthroughs have been done. I've reviewed some of the content of the walkthroughs. I've gone back to the principal to discuss the, the feedback that they've given and kind of discussed that, so making this really a focus of our area, that everybody deserves feedback to, so that we're always in that process of continuous improvement. So I welcome any questions anyone may have at this point.
Any questions?
Through the chair, for Professional Practice Goal 4D, where it says, "Action during principal meetings encourage reflection on practice," and that the teachers in their building to focus on continuous improvement. Who is, who are you encouraging reflection on practice? Is it the principal that you're encouraging them to reflect on practice, or the principal and the teachers?
Well, so I work directly with the principals, right? And through that avenue, my hope is that then they're doing the same thing with their teachers, and we have those conversations about that.
Other questions? All right, thank you.
I had mentioned the next item around revising the dates of our meetings at the last meeting, so I am requesting that the December 3rd meeting, which will be our budget kickoff, be moved to December 2nd. I have a personal event that I simply can't miss, and would ask the committee to consider moving to that Tuesday for that one meeting, if possible.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the change of the school committee meeting date from December 3rd, 2025, to December 2nd, 2025?
2nd.
I entertained.
I was really focused on what I was doing.
I literally just went, wait a minute.
I just looked at Mandy.
She looks at me, I'm like, why is no one saying anything? I'll make a motion to approve the change of the school committee meeting date from December 3rd, 2025, to December 2nd, 2025.
I'll second.
Thank you. What if they give me decaf?
All those in favor?
They might.
Aye.
Thank you.
I don't know, I second it.
Much appreciated.
All right, Green Dome.
The Green Dome. As many of you know, if you see outside Auburn High School, for the last four years, community donation and volunteer efforts, they have saved the Green Dome, which was the top of the old Auburn High School. They've now had it completely refurbished, and they abated lead paint, and they now have an information kiosk, a park bench, and have, they've refreshed the landscape. So on Sunday, November 23rd, at 1 o'clock, they will have a dedication ceremony. We're all cordially invited to attend, and wanted the community to know that as well, that they would welcome any support, so we appreciate all of their efforts. It took a long time and collecting a lot of pennies for them to get the money that they needed to do that, so it was a lot of work, and they deserve a job well done.
Looks beautiful.
And the last item is just sharing, the Auburn Chamber of Commerce mini-grant recipients. Over the last couple of weeks, thankfully to all these people and many more that applied for the grant this year, they really had a nice number of... They really had a nice, uh, number of folks that applied. Um, these were the ones that were awarded and they, again, they do it like the publisher's clearinghouse where they show up at the teacher's classroom with the big check and the balloons and, uh, people are awarded their, um, awarded their prize. So everyone is very appreciative, very appreciative to the Chamber of Commerce, who I can't, I'm sure they have a number of the amount of money that they have donated to our schools, but it's just a tremendous, um, resource and a tremendous partnership that we have with them. And we appreciate the support that they give us and the work that these folks took and others to fill out the application to get the grants. So, and if you notice now, they are $500. For a long time, they were 250 and they have, uh, increased that. So we appreciate all that. So thanks to everyone.
All right, Mr. Keller, teaching and learning report.
All right, so, um, tonight I, um, have the pleasure of talking to you about competency determination. I did not prepare a slide deck like I know, uh, you all look forward to. Instead, I handwrote some notes on that first thing there. So I'm going to walk you through a little bit about what we're talking about tonight, uh, in terms of competency determination and, uh, and then I'll go over those materials. So, um, first and foremost, as you all are aware, Massachusetts, as I believe you're aware, Massachusetts state law requires students to satisfy the requirements of a competency determination in order to graduate high school. Um, it's competency determination is one of three requirements in Massachusetts. The second being they have to meet local graduation requirements, which of course we as a district set. And the third one is for students, uh, with disabilities, uh, that they receive what's known as F.A.T., which is a free and appropriate public education. So competency determination in a nutshell is based on academic standards and curriculum frameworks through grade 10 and represents a determination that, uh, students have demonstrated a mastery of common core skills, competencies and knowledge. Beginning in 2003, the way that we determined competency determination was through MCAS. Um, and so we'll, um, that's a little bit of, uh, back in time. And I'll talk you, walk you through kind of what has happened since then, right? As you all, I think, know, in November of 2024, there was a ballot initiative that passed. Um, so voters approved, um, uh, the ballot question eliminating the use of MCAS as the sole basis for, uh, meeting the state's competency determination. Um, so the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education voted, received feedback from, um, people in the state on new regulations. So in July of, July 17th of 2025, they released these new, um, regulations to districts. They were updated on August 6th. So there's been a lot of, um, working really hard, uh, trying to figure all this stuff out, how we're going to meet the competency determination. So, um, there's basically kind of three ways that we're looking at this. The first is this, there was a short-term measure. So once this ballot initiative passed in November, um, you all approved in January of 2025, um, the first piece of paper that you have with my handwritten heading at the top, which is how are we going to make sure that the, the students that are currently in the high school are meeting this, uh, competency determination? So on the backside of that, um, paper, you'll see those three bullet points, uh, which at the time, uh, was said, receive a passing grade uh, in the equivalent of both grade nine and grade 10 English classes, receive a passing grade in the equivalent of Algebra I and Geometry, and receive a passing grade in Biology. So that is what's currently in the program studies, um, for how we are approaching this. So that was the short-term, um, solution. Medium term is the policy that I'm going to talk to you about, which is IKFE, and I'll get to that in a moment. And then in terms of a long-term, um, focus on competency determination, um, Governor Healy, uh, pulled together a K through 12 statewide graduation council that is currently working. Their, their timeline is December 1st, um, which is obviously forthcoming. Uh, the initial report is due to the governor. They've had, um, information out for public comments that you can find on the DESI website about what that new competency determination may look like and graduation requirements. Um, the final written report is due to her office, um, with recommendations on July 17th of 2026. Um, so we suspect that once again, this target will be moving. So anyway, so that's kind of a little bit of background, Back to the Future, uh, sort of thing there. So let me talk to you about what's in front of us tonight, which is, um, policy IKFE. This is a first reading. This is a brand-new policy, um, that all districts are working through. We are required by December 31st to submit this to the Department of Education. Uh, and as part of that process, you as a, as our governing body have to approve this. So tonight is a first reading. So, um, competence, competency determination, uh, submission and process is that students, we must show, uh, students must show a mastery of skills and satisfactory completion of relevant coursework. So I have had extensive conversations, as has Dr. Chamberlain, with, uh, Mr. DeLongchamp, Mr. Walton, department leaders at the high school, uh, high school staff have been having these conversations in their department meetings. I've had a conversation with Ash Lee, Ashley Isgro, who is the leader of the English Learning, uh, Department, as well as, um, Special Education, Ally DeLuca, who you saw earlier tonight. Um, so, um, ultimately, we have to make determinations on what we think, uh, will lead to students demonstrating that mastery. The other things that are required of us is that we have to, the additional considerations are, how are we going to make sure that students with disabilities, um, can meet these standards? English learners, I talked about that. Late-enrolling students, so somebody who moves to Massachusetts, say in grade 10, grade 11, and they haven't, uh, taken the courses. Uh, we also have to look at appeals processes. So ultimately, Department of Education says that each district must develop this policy. I mentioned it has to be approved and it has to be posted on our website once approved. So let me walk you through the document now that I've given you a little bit of background. Any questions on that stuff before I, um, dive into ultimately what we're proposing here tonight? Um, okay, so first and foremost, the class of 2026, their competency determination, um, is, is met by the MCAS administered prior to January 2025 in ELA Math and Science. So if they pass that MCAS, um, they are, uh, in good shape. So what we're talking about ultimately is the class of 2027 and beyond. Um, and so we had three options as districts in Massachusetts to look at either a final assessment that students take in the courses, English, Math, Science and History, uh, a portfolio or an equivalent measure. Um, and so the proposal, after much discussion, I've, will tell you that, uh, a lot of conversations with, um, surrounding districts and communities about how they're approaching this, uh, as well as talking with, um, the people who lead the departments. So the proposal, uh, is to have, as our competency determination is to have passing grades in English 9 and 10. So we're required to have two full-year courses. Uh, if a student does not pass English 9 or 10, um, that they would take a subject matter final assessment. And, uh, so in math, um, they would need to take those two full-year courses, Algebra I and Geometry, or Integrated Math 1, Integrated Math 2. And if they do not pass both of those courses, that they would take a subject matter final assessment. They're required to take one full-year course in science, either biology, chemistry or physics. Uh, and if they do not pass that course, that they would, um, complete a subject matter portfolio. So in English and Math, I talked about a final assessment. In the science, uh, it is a portfolio. And the same is true of, uh, social studies. So US History 1, US History 2, or AP US History, that's a one-year, uh, one full-year course, one-year, uh, full-year course. Um, they would, if they do not pass that class, then they would, um, complete a subject matter portfolio. Um, so, you know, the, the conversations around final assessments or portfolios, we had a lot of conversations around that and talked about, do we have a final assessment? Um, and I suspect you might be wondering why, uh, we're not going to the final assessment. And ultimately, the conversations we had were feeling as though, and Dr. Chamberlain mentioned this a moment ago, uh, working on building up our assessments over the course of the year and having students, um, pass those, those assessments and the different, um, things that they do in the course that are measured, uh, and of course, uh, replicated in the curriculum frameworks. Truly, and if the, the child is passing those courses, then they are showing, um, that proficiency as opposed to one final assessment and kind of putting all the weight in that. And so that is what is, what has led us to, um, making this proposal for our competency determination. I'll pause there and then I'll get into some of the other pieces on that. Any questions on English, Math, Science and Social Studies?
Through the chair, I do. When you say subject matter assessment, you're saying a test?
Yeah, a final assessment, yep.
So it would be like a final exam for said graduating student?
Yes.
Only if they didn't pass the course.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm saying, we're going, we're going, we're having some difficulties. So you're gonna give them a test on what they haven't been able to pass for two years to determine that they meet the requirement to graduate?
Well, it would be for that one year. So let's, let's say they passed the English 9 and then, uh, did not pass English 10, um, as a course. Then, then if they end of English 10, we would give them that, uh, final assessment on English 10. Yes. So, and that ultimately, it's a, it's a great question and that ultimately is, um, some of the conversations that we had about putting all this weight into final assessment. Cause there are some districts that are, that are saying that the way that we're going to determine this is a final assessment. And we felt pretty strongly that we wanted to measure that student's progress throughout the course of the year, not just on that one snapshot.
Right. I just, I just know that anything that says exam, test or whatever, that is a heightened sense of fear and anxiety and they're already, you know, they're teenagers with the hormones already. And now you're going to be like, so if you don't pass this.
Yeah.
Through the chair, which I am tonight. They are gonna have more than one chance to take this.
They are, yes.
Before.
Yep, and so this is at the end of grade 10, right? And so then there's an opportunity and there is appeals process and there's a variety of ways that we, um, will support that student to make sure that they can get to that point, but.
Right, right, okay.
There's also been, over the last several years at Auburn High School, a push to make sure that we have lessened the number of students who are failing through interventions with kids, right?
Right.
So that's where the te, the teacher has to be really in tune with, as a student starts to show signs, right?
Right.
There has to be that picking up along the way. Um, and they've already laid some of the foundation for that in our classes to, um, to lower the number of students who are failing.
Yeah. No, I know, I, I know you're not going to just wish them the best of luck and just, you know, I, I understand that. I just, this is a test, this is a test. Oh, but you can show us that you know what physics is by showing a boat that can sink and fall and volume that you've done throughout the year. You know what I mean? You've already done the work.
Yeah.
It'd be hard to do a portfolio, I'm thinking, for math.
Yeah.
I mean.
What, English is writing, right? Or writing learners or whatever it's called? I'm gonna say it wrong.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know, I trust our, I'm sure we brought this up to the English department.
Through the chair, is this something that the English department is going to work on together? It's not going to be individually teacher-based, right?
Correct, yes, they've, they've actually designed, um, the, the assessments, um.
I mean, all of our students are going to pass, so we don't even have to have this conversation. I just, I'm just gonna open Pandora's box just a little bit and just go, okay. The student showed up in grade 11 with nothing. What do we do for the, you know, that student? You know?
Yeah.
Maybe knowing how many kids fail would be good to, to know, like what our statistics are.
It's going to be zero.
I know that, our kids are awesome.
Well, we, we know, right?
And the report coming out, um, I was actually at a meeting today with Secretary Tutteweiler. And I think ultimately, there will be some kind of common bar set. It can't be an MCAS because the voter said that it can't, graduation can't be based on one test. Um, but they're working, this graduation council that, uh, Mr. Keller spoke about is working through that. And I'm going to suspect, now it's going to take some time. So he called this a, you know, an intermediate kind of level, you know, solution to the problem. It's going to take a little bit of time because we are federally required to have some kind of a.
Absolutely.
Common bar, whatever that is, right? So they're working through that now, um, so, yeah, more to come.
Right. I just know that from an MCAS standpoint, and like I said, I didn't have to do the MCAS, which I am thankful for. Um, but I know as a proctor for Special Ed MCAS, there was a writing part of MCAS where it was the Count of Monte Cristo and they had to define the characters and understand the plot and the theme and, you know, talk about it. And that was considered a bar, you, that they had to meet for like ninth grade English. That wasn't like a test that's, you know, similes and metaphors and parts of speech or whatever an English test is, I don't know, I haven't taken English in a long time.
Through the chair, I, I get the vibe that that's something that the English department would like put in. They'd give you like a reading and say, do something like that. Like based on, based on the standards, the state standards that are coming out. I'm sure that the high school English department is like, okay, we're gonna do something similar. You know, I know that like a lot of people still use the MCAS as like a bar for like, let's give them this reading and see how they do. You know, as a beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of year. So like, they might be actually going back and looking at the past MCAS and saying, okay, here's a question that we could use.
You're exa-
Modifying it, yeah.
Sorry, you're exactly right. That's, that's some of the work that we've did, we've done on the professional development time, uh, to this point.
It's like less of a test, like a simile is, a metaphor.
Just thinking the SATs, red is to blue as biking is to.
No, I'm sure it's like a long, I'm sure it's like a reading and a writing, it's not a similar.
It's biking is to.
We'd like PTSD from that.
I, I mean, that, and you had to sit for like two and a half hours and like fill in the bubble and make sure, like, I mean.
I'm sure there will be no more bubbles.
Well, I'm just saying, like, English is hard.
It is, no, you're right, absolutely, 100%. Well, thank you for.
Yeah, first read, right?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and let me just touch on a couple of the last, uh, things on there. Um, so, um, okay. So then the, so there's additional considerations. Um, so I talked about students with disabilities. Um, so, you know, we have students that, um, aren't necessarily taking some of these courses, um, given whatever, what's in their IEP. And so, um, we have the opportunity to have district-determined equivalent courses. And then also students on out-of-district placements. Uh, we need to work with those, uh, placements around competency determination. English language students, uh, those are done on a case-by-case basis. And districts are also encouraged to identify some of the courses that our English learners take and, and have those be focused in the English department. Uh, I mentioned late-enrolling students, we would do a transcript review, um, look at additional courses. And there is the potential on a, on a case-by-case, on a small basis to use the MCAS, though districts are encouraged to not use the MCAS given the, the outcome of the ballot initiative. And then the last thing I'll say, um, and I mentioned this earlier, is, um, the appeals process. So you can see the appeals process is written out there. So at first, uh, somebody who wishes to appeal, parent or student, um, can submit that to the principal. Uh, the principal will review that and make a decision within 10 days. And then if that person does not, um, agree with, if that, if they're denied, um, they have the opportunity to appeal to the superintendent.
Awesome.
Through the chair, Alan, do we need to like flesh out the English language learner? Because case-by-case basis makes me a little nervous.
First read.
I'm very well aware, but I'm just, I'm putting it out there so he knows. I, I just, like, do we need to put more information there? Like, for me, a case-by-case base, basis is too vague.
Yeah, I, um, I, I hear you and I, I completely understand where you're coming from that. Um, I, I think that I, I will work on seeing what I can do. You know, the, the thing with English learners is they, they come to us with so many different entry points.
Is there, is there like a benefit to being like, if the WEDA scores are here and here, like we do this. If the WEDA scores are here and here, we do this. I just, it's concerned, like, it's too vague, I'm just concerned with.
Let me put some thought into that, yeah. I don't think so, but.
You know what I meant.
But that's a good point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for all your work on that.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, this is a bear and a half.
All right, business and financials.
Um, I did provide you with a year-to-date budget report for the Auburn 26 school year dated November 13th, 2025 for your review. And I just wanted to note that the available budget at this time, um, and again, uh, we have seen, um, large increases in part due to our special education costs. So, um, we are about $280,000 short, um, from where we were at this time last year.
Oh, boy.
So I just want to make sure that we are aware of that, you know? Um, and again, it's due a large part to the increased special education costs.
We need to end on a positive, no emphasis.
Thanks.
Well, it's, it's still in the positive.
Still positive, still good.
I do have a question, what happened to the beautiful graphs that we had?
Yep, that will be each quarter.
Quarter, okay.
The quarter, but I did just want to give you a heads up because there was quite a difference from where we were at this time last year.
Yep.
But yes, I will keep, keep the pretty graphs when it comes.
All right.
So I won't do, won't do the budget.
Yeah.
So that will be telling, I promise.
Thank you, and we do not need executive session.
We do not.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good night, everyone.